Okay, my computer is running an update right now. Conveniently. So we can go ahead and get this meeting started. I don't think we need it for our show. So we'll be good to go. So we're gonna call our meeting to order at 6:33. And we're gonna start off with the pledge and prayer. Bubba would like to lead us in the pledge.
Absolutely.
And Kevin's gonna do the prayer.
I pledge the allegiance of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's great. Dear gracious Father, we just wanna thank you for this day, another day that you've given us. Lord, we just pray you for that. And Lord, we just thank you for this country that we live in, the freedoms that we have. And Father, help us always be mindful of how great that is and how great you have been to us and the country. Father, pray you just bless this meeting this evening. Help us to do business for the county and be in your will. And Father, I just thank you for each and every one that's here.
Pass the page and read and approve the minutes. And then grab this packet from the super. Okay, we're gonna move along from Travis. Does have a comment to make, but we're gonna come back. We're gonna circle back and we're probably gonna go out of order for a minute. We're gonna jump ahead and go ahead and approve the meeting dates for 2023. That's in your guys' packet. I talked with John Meade last week, and we thought it would be best to follow the council schedule. So first Monday of every month, except for the month of September, the council meets on Tuesday, September 5th. So in September, the meeting would be on the first Tuesday instead of the first Monday. But that would be the same council meeting dates. So that, if that's okay with everyone. If not, can always change.
Motion to approve.
So does man a motion to approve the meeting dates for 2023?
Sir.
Mark Hartman seconded.
Kevin.
No, Mark.
All in. All in favor of approving the meeting dates as proposed? Say aye.
Aye.
Bubba made the motion. Yes, sir. And Kevin seconded.
No, Mark seconded.
Mark seconded.
No, Mark seconded.
And then the next order of business, and then we'll get to Travis, is we're going to go ahead and organize the new members and positions for 2023. I am stepping down as president. You guys got that in an email last week. Um, so we'll have a new president this year. And moving on as such, so John?
Uh, return the meeting over to me.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, this time, I'll maintain a motion. Uh, who would? Uh, not. President of the Plan Commission. Somebody wants to make that motion?
I'm not next, Todd.
Is there a second? Any other nomination?
The nomination be closed.
Okay, the mayor will lose. Is there a second?
Second.
You're going to do second.
Kevin, did? Theodore seconded?
Daniel. Yeah. Give it. Um, all in favor of having a president in the Plan Commission say aye.
Aye.
And we approve. And I would also nominate a vice president. So I'll maintain a motion for a vice president of the Plan Commission. I nominate Kevin Baer. Is there a second?
I'll second him.
Who's that? Any other nominations for vice president?
Danielle Walker.
Uh, motion to close nomination.
Motion to close? How do you even say it? I mean, you missed Danielle Walker. I nominated Danielle Walker.
I didn't hear that.
If I may, I tried this two or three years ago, and I'm not making this up. She told me this, and I know she is a lady of her word. She told us that due to her position, that Purdue University frowns upon her holding office. Not that we wouldn't like her to be. This is what she told me.
Is there a motion to close nomination for vice president?
Yes, I do think so.
Is there a second?
Second.
Emily? All in favor of closing nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All in favor of naming Kevin Baer as vice president of the Plan Commission? Say aye.
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 Any opposed? Congratulations. I'll turn over the evening to you.
All right.
Hey, Todd, before you start in?
Yes.
The input's not working to put the, commence the document on the TV. But I did have to put it out what we're gonna talk about. So it should be okay.
That's, that's fine.
Okay.
We're gonna circle back to what you referred to earlier, Travis. I'll do this, uh, I'm sorry. Closing comments on Health Department Minimum Acreage Standards.
Okay. Yeah. Um, I just wanted to make sure, we had a little discussion about this topic last meeting. I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page. Um, it was something that was brought to me from the Health Department, from Chris Bowden. And he wanted me to pass it along to the board on the acreage minimums, three quarters of acre and an acre, three quarters of acre for their set of systems that are on city water, an acre if it is well. And he wanted me to go ahead and address the board to make sure you guys were aware of it that. I think it's either junior July, it's gonna be off the books for the state. So it's not gonna be in place anymore for the county. Um, and I think there was a little bit of concern of how it's going to affect the Health Department with any other other minimums or regulations. And besides that one rule, it's not. It, you know, it was brought to me from them. So I think there was some concern in there that if the board go, would move ahead and pass something like that, uh, didn't interfere with something maybe that the Health Department's doing in their regulations. It's not, like I said, it was brought to me from them. And the other thing I think was a little bit of confusion too, how it's going to affect incorporated towns. It doesn't have anything to do with incorporated towns. There, we kinda got off on that for some reason. It just, it's just a county matter. It doesn't have anything to do with incorporated town whatsoever. So it's just, it was a county standard. So I just wanna make sure that we were all clear with that. So, you know, it's nothing that, out of the county that hasn't, you know, already been done here the past whatever, 25 years, so.
And this is new construction. In other words, we just inherited it. What used to be a town, Hardensburg, which is the county's now. So in other words, if there's a three quarter acre water, half acre lot, it's not gonna affect them because they're basically grandfathered. I mean, this is only new. Well, my point is, you can't go to every resident who lives in Hardensburg and say, hey, you can't do this when you spend like that for 100 years.
If they have a three quarter acre lot, can they, they're gonna build that house?
Build.
Then it doesn't affect them.
Yes.
And I think there, what was brought up is that some of those may, may exist. That was the question is, in Hardensburg, if those three quarter lots exist now, they don't have, have, because they could have, got a house or a septic or whatever. And that was, I think, the question.
Yeah.
I'm looking at.
New, new construction.
Adams, nothing would be grandfathered under the way we're discussing it now. Um, correction if I'm wrong, the way that it is now, this Health Department divided by state law, statute, whatever, there are three quarters of acre for well. And that's going.
City water.
Acre well. Yep. And that's going away. And if we do nothing as a council, then it would just be, it would go away and that would not be a requirement for any place in the county, including unincorporated Hardensburg. If we, however, if we do create a kind ordinance to mirror that while it goes away, hard, any lot under a three quarters of acre in, say, Hardensburg, will be affected.
But it would have been affected had this not been changed. If the state hadn't changed, it would, it would have still affected them the same way. Correct?
Say it again.
If the state had stayed the same, Hardensburg would still have to abide by those rules.
Correct. If you were gonna build a house today in Hardensburg while the state law statute is in, is still in place, this, the Health Department cannot issue a permit to a three quarter or half acre lot to put a separate system on it because it's violation of the state. Correct. If it, yeah, if it would happen today, yes, that's my understanding. Now, if it happens, if we do nothing as a commission here and it happens in August after the state abolishes that, they could proceed to build on half acre lot in Hardensburg. Correct. Or less. It's just, they will just go by, this is just my understanding, that they're just going by a soil test. If it passes, it can be a tenth of an acre.
Yeah.
That's it. I mean, there's gonna be no allowance for repair, nothing. It's just gonna be, if it passes today, that's what's gonna happen, so.
I guess my question is, is why does the Plan Commission need to develop this ordinance? Why can't it just be a building ordinance?
He, I guess.
Would that be because the Health Department doesn't follow building ordinances?
Right, it's just, yeah.
Because you're not gonna make sure it's accepted.
He, yeah, the Health Department just wanted me to bring it to the board so you all are aware of it. So nothing would just, you know, happen in July and all of a sudden, why weren't we notified or what have you? No, the building code wouldn't have anything to do with any health ordinances, set bits, nothing like that. It just basically says, you know, approval from the Health Department to move to a building stage. That description. We don't have any say so over that, over them at all.
But the reason you want to see this followed through with is that a courtesy of the Health Department? And so there's consistency in county rules, right? Pretty much.
I, I think that's what the, is that what his email said? I believe, I didn't, I think that's what he said.
If it stands on, organs is a fact, you will lose any control over lots size like the home building in Washington County.
When was that email sent?
December 30th.
So Danielle, Joan, help us out on this. Help me wrap my brain around this. What Danielle is saying, we need to respect the recommendation of Health Department, then this board needs to recommend to the commissioners to pass an ordinance? Is that right?
Well, I just, I don't, I need somebody to explain to me why the Plan Commission creates this ordinance and not the building commissioner or the commissioners for, can the Health Department create their own?
I don't think, yeah, I don't think that was.
Why it's the Plan Commission?
He just, I don't think he's saying it's your responsibility. I've just passed along the information to you all. Have you guys wanna pass something or whatever John recommends? If it, if you do or don't, it doesn't matter or does it need to go to commissioners? I just.
Right, I think it needs to happen. I just wanna know who really is, who should, who's the best place? If we are, then let's do it. But we're gonna have to find somewhere to put it. Like, is it just a single ordinance, one page, two sentences? They gets put on our website? Or is it gonna be included in the new document? I mean, I don't understand. The commissioners have to pass it to make ordinance for tomorrow.
I, I always thought, for what has happened in the past, that this board, in this, in this instance, this board would whatever they think, if it's a half acre, it's whatever, and then pass it on to the commissioners, and then they pass it. But it has to start, I guess, here. But if it dies here, it's, you know, whatever.
I'm, I'm not saying kill it here.
No, I, you know, either way.
I'm saying find a place that starts the conversation about it. And I don't, and that is true. I mean, we can, we can do that and then.
Yeah, it's just whatever you all like. I mean, it's.
Don't we already, isn't this already the model? Or the ordinance, whatever you wanna call it? Isn't this what he already does when he goes out?
Correct.
So was this not already passed?
No, it was recommend, it was what he had to follow from the state. The state told him, no, the state's taking it back.
The state is trying to make recurrent regulations more lax, and we don't want that. Right? I mean, that's what they're saying. They're trying to make it more lax. And we want it to remain the way it is. And in order for us to make it remain the way it is, we need to either give a recommendation to the commissioners to pass a separate ordinance or, I mean, does it, does this fall under code enforcement?
Well, I think the, the size of the lot and the need for a setic permit is part of this building code.
Right.
So, I mean, the Plan Commission can make, adopt a resolution or make a resolution, a recommendation to the commissioners to do this, but ultimately it's up to the commissioners to enact it. So whether it's initiated by the Plan Commission or initiated by the commissioners, I don't wanna make a whole lot of difference, but this impacts the basic provisions of the building code, the county building code.
So if we make the recommendation, then we have to have a public hearing before we can send it to the commissioners? And then they have to have a public hearing?
They have to have a public hearing.
We don't have to? If we adopted as?
We can have a resolution and make it a recommendation to the commission. And then if they, if they want to adopt it, then they would have to have a public hearing because it involves a change of the county ordinance.
So this isn't already written up with a number next to it that Chris does every day? It's, I mean, this, I'm just thinking, this is off, this is already in the works?
It's, it's written up in the county ordinance that, you know, if you're not on city water, you're on well, your lot size has gotta be elevated. If you're on city water, then you can have a setic and all of this stuff. The, and, and that somewhat follows the state requirement but with respect to the issuance of a, sue, a cert. Setic. But the states were moving that requirement for the Health Department. For the Health Department, so.
Travis, the, what you read, what Chris sent you, three quarters of acre with municipal water, four, one acre if you have a well. Is that currently written in the Washington County ordinance under Health Department?
Yes.
And is it also stated in the building code?
No building code. It's under, you can look it up. I, I believe it's under our code and ordinances. I think it's section, go under Health Department. I think it's under section 51. Like 51.1, I don't know what it is. Under Health Department.
So if I'm on our county website, I go where it is?
Well, under.
I have to go to the washingtoncounty.gov, click on Health Department, go to setic systems. You click on what steps needs to be taken to install an executive system, and it's right there.
What section is that on? 451?
It doesn't have a number next to it. It's not like numbered or anything, but it is right there.
So if it's already written in Washington County code under Health Department, and we want to leave it as it is, why do we need to do anything?
Right.
That, that's what I'm asking. If it's already, is it in the code for Washington County?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
It is so.
Well, she's, and I'm not, Emily, Emily, she just, yeah, we're already on the website, yeah.
Do you have your codebook with you?
I'm not trying to be a jerk. I'm just trying to be honest.
No, you're right, you're right.
If we already have code, then, then we don't need to reinvent it. We don't need to.
And that's fine. It, it, yes, it is in there, but that, Chris is telling me that that part of it, he is not enforcing anymore. It is in the R code, so I, that's a lot, that's all.
Can Chris come to one of our meetings as current was asked? Can Chris tell them to run one of our meetings as current was asked? That's what I was like.
If it's in, if it's in our code or our language here, and the state's going to deal away with it, and he's not going to enforce it. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Well, why wouldn't he enforce it?
Right.
Well, I don't know.
He just has some questions here.
I know.
It kind of hurts me here. I'm starting to get a little bit irritated. Now, I haven't been here much. I'll get about this. If, if we, if we come in from above him in the Health Department. So who was he, the state or us?
We did.
Well, the county authorities.
Okay. The Health Department is supervising Dr. Bill.
And would he not, you know, he says, that just came up in saying he wouldn't enforce it from here on out. It's like, well, it hasn't even changed until June 2023. And then don't even know for sure. You know, we don't, there's not like a, there's a date popping up that's just out there. He would have to enforce it through-
In hands.
Until it happened.
But say it's a law.
And then if he kept on doing it, who's going to stop him? States don't come, I mean, really, the states, I'm pretty sure pretty busy. They don't come down here and say, I mean, somebody's going to run back up and, and say, hey, they're not letting me do this. Well, send their code.
So he just, so I don't know. He just wants to pass it along to all of that stuff. I mean, you know.
I have to have him on video or something. Well, we're going to host around here. We're going to, you know, here is January. Next thing you know, it's going to be June. And we're still going to be beating this thing around the, beating this thing around the roving. In my opinion. I, I just don't, I guess I don't wonder, I guess I'm really trying to grasp how
Why the email is not what it should say?
The counties don't have to do it. But if we, if we adopted it, or started, the commissioners adopted it, then I would think it's part of the Health Department's, or what, they would have to do it.
I would agree with you.
You're right.
Correct. At that point, we, we as a county are going to be more stringent on this than the state. So he would be enforcing the county ordinance.
Right.
So, but that answers the question, what about unincorporated county lots that are less than what these minimums are? Are they, do they, do they all go to the BCA? Everybody just wants to build on half acre, do you come to, come to the BCA?
Town apartments are on-
It's in here, I've seen it before.
Do they have septic or do they have cities working?
I remember someone-
Septic?
The town apartments are on city water and on septic. They do not have their own waste management system.
And wouldn't this behind the opening up this area and land, to just run rampant?
You'll be running rampant. Run rampant. You have to remember that we still have a, a two acre minimum on septic.
This is, this is already here.
So you can't, you can't develop a septic.
We do have, we have a lot smaller two acres.
But that's just a-
Yeah, I still don't think, and the rest of the law has overran.
They, they, that, that would be hard to do in a-
In the, I don't, I don't feel like Chris is getting so, I don't even really know what we're talking about. Because it's already a county ordinance.
We'd say, I have to get a lawyer.
We're in harden hearing today.
Just go to, yes, and then government, we, and where it says, publish. Washington County.
That's what Chris is saying. He's saying, he was late.
I think Chris was, yeah. He's a lot of background.
And Chris was-
Kind of similar to what you're saying.
So he's thrown in an argument. Look, it's all, it's already on the books. We don't need to do anything. Okay. That's easy enough. It's all, it's already- 52.22-
Hold, hold on, wait a minute, we might have come-
Right. So saying, what you guys were saying it up.
Whenever you read that code right below it, it says-
1985 code 4-1-6.
That's an Indiana code.
And when that Indiana code goes away-
Then we can't, it needs to be re, not referencing-
So we need to, we don't reference Indiana code. We reference-
So our, our current document references, our Washington County Public Works document references that Indiana code. When that Indiana code goes away, as of July 1, that requirement goes away. So our only-
It doesn't change our head here. If the state repeals that statute, it doesn't change our head.
So the weakness never moves out from the-
That reference from the public works thing?
That's a reference, but it's not. The county ordinance is a separate document.
So it's in, why is that reference just to say that that's where we got it? But if it said that we were going to follow the state ordinance related to septic systems?
Yes.
Code 12345. And if 12345 goes away and we don't have our own orders in there?
So maybe that's why he makes it happen. Or it's referencing the state code. And if it goes away, then we don't have it anymore.
Right.
Maybe.
So do we need to get rid of that 1985 code comma 4?
Well, you know, the, the county ordinance at some point needs to be updated. There are numerous changes that have been made in that document that are unwanted.
Yeah. Protests.
Proceed. Executive serves as the legislative in the county. Makes changes. And the IT staff who works through the office. And it comes to the decision.
So how about we just let Chris know that we found it in the Indiana code? And he still doesn't believe that it's in the county code? Then he needs to come to the February meeting?
He knows it's in there.
That's what I'm saying. If he still believes that it's not a change, then he can come or go to the commissioners meeting and talk directly to the commissioners. He asked a little certainly about it, or he wouldn't, they could be done away.
So why can't we take the words that's in that state code and put them in our code?
It is.
It is.
That's what that is.
Oh, okay. So if we got it in our code, this is the way we want it done?
Yeah, it's still, it's still there.
So why, so if the state, if it goes, state goes away, oh, well, it goes away. What, this is what we're going to do, right?
Yep.
But I understand where Deidre and Emily were coming from when it referenced the state code.
The one where-
On it. If, if that means it goes away, if the state-
Yeah, watch this. See that?
Yeah.
Right here.
Get away.
Can you, can you back this up?
Not intelligent, we got to keep this going.
I was just supposed to-
Glad you brought it, Deidre.
Huh?
Thank you for bringing that up. Okay.
Take this, I didn't have to.
Yeah. Title of the state.
Travis, you have to, that's our-
Travis, take this, manage it down. He comes here with you, that's what he comes saying. And you tell him to create a, all of that to you all. I was just taking the order, being handed it.
Is that just, ask, ask along. So there it is.
Okay. Based on what we just discussed for the past 40 minutes, we don't know any more than we did, but yet, yes, we did. So we'll move along and leave it as it is. It's already a Washington County code.
There you go.
And it's going to remain a Washington County code, no matter what the state says. So it's okay if counties have more stringent rules than the state's members. When we leave it like it is, that's what we got. Because they're going to change their rules come July 1st. So we're good. Okay.
Can I ask one question real quick?
I suppose.
I'll make it real quick, just concerning me. When now, outside of this meeting here, and we're going to leave it as is, and you get into these, let's say, smaller towns, and they're not anywhere close to just use three quarters of an acre, a variance is requested, where then will the variance go? Will it go, because it's not going to have anything to do with health standards? It will be just wrote up as acreage standards by the variance coming in here? Or where they don't, they go to commissioners or in here?
Who created this ordinance?
The Health Department. It's a Health Department code. They go to the Health Department. Okay.
That's why I need a laptop. Here we go.
I heard it. Do what the county want in the laptop? Would everyone just feel more comfortable if we tabled this? And do we need to bring Chris in here?
It's up to you guys, whatever you all like.
I, I want to know who, who is responsible for this ordinance? Like, I understand that when, when the, there's someone who has a confined being operation variance, they come here to our Board of Zoning Appeals. Because we created that ordinance. But did the plant commission create the Title V Public Works ordinance? Or did the county commissioners create that? And I can't find on here where it says when it was adopted or who adopted it. At least not quickly. So I think would that decide who provides the variance?
Because that's going to be a major hurdle when you go to enforce this. And I've just got a third of an acre. And I can't afford to buy more ground. I need a variance. And then you go back and let's say there, the peak and orange bird, whatever. And then you've got that situation. But then in the county, you're going back to the three quarters of an acre.
Who did they go to? Who did they go to before? Did they go to the state Indiana?
Do.
If somebody, if the law, whenever this, this Indiana ordinance goes away, if I only have a half an acre and I can, or the situation that you just, the example that you just gave, right now, if that happens, I can't afford to go back and purchase. Who do I go and talk to?
Well, that'd be up to Chris. I, I don't, I don't get any of that part of it.
So-
I should know the answer to that, but I honestly don't know. If he, if he has a dispute at the Health Department-
It goes to their health board, doesn't it? I, I mean, I'm just guessing.
Well, the septic system.
I would assume it would go to the health board.
Yeah, that's a paid board.
That, that's all I heard is that board right there. So, and I'm, I'm just guessing, I don't know.
Okay. Since Chris was concerned about this, out of respect for him, I suggest we do what we talked about at the November meeting that Mr. Cott suggested. We have Chris Bowling attend the meeting for discussion so we don't make the wrong choice here. But I, well, we're not really making a choice. We're just-
Just get some clarification?
Yep.
Yeah. I, I'd like to suggest that we make sure Travis's question that he just brought up is in the minutes for next month. Because to me, that's my main concern as well. And if we can't answer here, not for us.
Which is what?
That's what it's all about. It's, it's, it's how you're going to have, how, where does it go? Because the variance, you're going to have that problem of people with existing lots that don't even come close to the minimum standards. Especially if you're talking about, you know, being, the county now being involved with some of these incorporated towns. Who's going to hear the variance? Or is this even going to apply to existing lots?
Right.
Does that sound about right to what you're saying?
Yeah.
Put words in your mouth, but, you know.
Okay, I'll contact Chris Bowling and see that he's here for the February meeting. And we'll go from there. If everybody's okay with that. Moving on. Section 517 telecommunications facilities. I think at the last meeting, Emily, you kind of tweaked this a little bit. But I think Joan also-
Yeah. Well, I think we, I missed November, John missed December. So we just need clarity on if, if this is okay with an orange from John, then if everyone's okay with the way that 517 would look, we could probably just approve it and add it to the working document, if that's okay with everyone. But if we need to make some changes, we can. But we just kind of hit different timelines on that.
Okay, let's take a minute or two, allow ourselves a little time to read through this.
But we just want to make sure we're clear. Because we put on this.
Yeah.
So this hasn't been changed? We just have 517?
Yes. And then we work on other, for the Ford and Harrison, Jackson, others, we give up this one. So it's a package, it's made up. But if we're like, if we can put it in practice.
Since we don't have anything up on the screen here, I'll... Memorize it. Emily, if you could refresh our memories, the wordage in this 517, did this not originate from KK or...
Well, we started with KK's document, and then we didn't really like the way it looked, so you guys asked that I pull out all the ordinances I could find from adjoining counties to see what they had. So the part that's referenced, we really liked the part of Jackson County.
Right.
And so what's in orange is where I just took out what was Jackson County and put in what was in the Washington County, the Sable Aviation Commission.
Gotcha.
And then John was gonna go back and double check with the towers and stuff, with the aviation rules and stuff, to see if those correlated. And I think you said it, I wasn't here, but I think it was okay, maybe, but we never approved it or anything. We didn't make a motion to accept it for what it was. And then I missed the meeting, I missed that November meeting when it was talking. Now, October, November, we didn't have one, then I, then we missed. So we're just, plenty of ketchup, to clarify. But we kinda put it together from multiple counties and things.
It's all coming back to me now.
I think the first question on the front page was section orange, it was about the five mile radius. I think that's what the first question was about. And then on that back page, it was about the funding, or whatever, to remove the facilities from the terminal, how that would work or something, if I believe that's right.
Let's go down to starting at the top, most of these paragraphs are fairly short. And make sure we're all in favor of what the document says, and have any questions on any of these. We'll address them as we have these come. 517.1. That's pretty simple. Anybody have any issues with the first paragraph, 517.1? Okay. 517.11. Point 1.1. Anybody okay with 517.1.1? Any questions? 517.1.2?
Yes. Uh, the reference in the last one is, I think, incorrect. I think it should be 517.6.
517.
Oh, yeah, that's correct.
You're wrong with there.
We're looking for the whole 517.6, not 517.7.
Let's just get the wrong with the code number on.
It's no change, though.
On which one?
On 517.1.2.
Yeah?
This, the last line, this.
Oh, got you, got you. Who's responsible for correcting that? You are?
I got it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Moving right along. Any questions on that paragraph? Not 517.2? Point 1. That looks good. Point 2.2?
Yes.
Point 2.3?
Whoa.
Whoop.
I would suggest adding to that, including the tax parcel ID number, not just the legal description with tax parcel ID.
That sounds good.
Yeah, I know.
Because the legal description may actually cover multiple parcels.
True. You got that, Emily?
Say tax parcel ID number, or numbers.
Anybody good with that? Point 2.3? Questions on that one?
No.
Point 2.4?
No issue.
Point 2.5? Good? Point 2.6?
Yep. I question, it says, the end of that says jurisdictional area of unincorporated Washington County. Why women... Why women listing sites unoperated by applicant to just jurisdictional area of unincorporated Washington County? Would you not want to include in Washington County? Including the city and public burden?
Well, that brings up another question. Do not these... Well, let's just use the city, they have their own codes.
True.
I mean, I'm not disagreeing with you, but we don't have any authority.
You don't, we don't have any authority?
In the city of Salem.
In the city of Salem, but...
I mean, we...
What we, what we want to know and be interested in, if they...
Add multiple?
Have, have, oh, the cell sites.
Yeah, that's all that's saying, isn't it?
But it's only asking for cell sites within unincorporated Washington County.
Got you. So we need to strike unincorporated and move on, right?
I would just say operated by the applicant in Washington County.
Got it.
I agree.
Everybody okay with that?
Can we add Indiana on the end of that, even though we know Washington County is in Indiana?
That'd be good. Point 2.7? That's pretty simple. Everybody okay?
Yep.
Point 8?
Is the six months different than what? Than the 12 that's in 17.6?
I think that's what we questioned, too. Why was it, in the other ones, was it 12 or something?
Then 17.6, it says, you can have facilities removed. If the facility was no longer used, then we could, um, on the second line. Because that says the facilities have to be removed, and it said that it has to be removed if it's not being used for six continuous months. So, that's fine.
Everybody okay with that, then?
Yeah.
Point 9?
My question is, in an effort to promote collection, co-locations on existing towers, a written agreement must be present. A written agreement from whom?
That would make sense, but I don't know.
Wouldn't it be the Plan Commission?
No. I think if you're willing to promote co-locations on existing towers, then I would think you would want a written agreement from the owners.
Or owners of the towers?
Of the tower. And if you want to co-locate the facility. Simple say, a written agreement from owner of the tower.
Can you do it one more time?
Written agreement from the owner of the host tower. Host tower.
What if two towers are leasing the same parcel, neither one of them?
Well, I assume that if we're on the same parcel, we're probably getting the same, the same assumption.
You're listing all of them. Well, I guess I would do the leased parcel. Above, above. Landowner, county resident and landowner leases the acre to three different, to Verizon and AT&amp;T, and somebody else, BMT, they took all, they leased one acre, they put all three towers there. Does that, landowner, meaning the one that built up that, is... Presenting this agreement?
I would, I would assume that the owner of the tower, within the point of easement or ownership document, or if it's leased, probably would cover the ability to affix other antennas within the landowner property. I know the new microwave tower that was built, sat on my desk, has, I think, like two tenants on it.
Okay.
Inside.
And it's one structure. That's where I was, I was thinking, it's one parcel, two structures. This is referred to, one parcel, one structure, multiple pieces of equipment that are needed.
Got you.
That's like the war, it's got two different antennas on it. How it could, did this... 517.2.2? Within a five mile radius, you should add a Salem Municipal Airport parent I-83.
You gotta repeat all of the answers, I can write that down.
Five, establish five mile radius, insert of Salem Municipal Airport. Left parent, I-83, right parent, period. And in this third line, it should say all the game. Landing. And in this third line, it should say all the building.
Okay, 517.3. Who okay with, and, and
That's like the downloads, so we'll be sure that it looks like that.
Everybody okay with that? Any questions about point 4.1? Everybody okay with that? Height requirements, 5. I think we talked about that in length, going all the way back to November. And that's what we decided on. If I remember right. Someone correct me if I'm wrong.
I think it's back farther than November.
Okay. I didn't say what year.
I'm just saying. But we did, we talked about it for a really long time.
And we talked in great length about removal. That was a concern that everybody had.
Yes, and this is what John was going to look into or something. They wanted us, I think it was a question like, if we had to set up an account, or if they had to do something with money.
Well, a performance guarantee, yeah.
Yeah, I knew he was going to look into that, explain it to us or something.
John, 517.6, on the removal, we talked about that. Everyone was concerned about abandoned, well, even on the solar panels and things. On the removal, did you need to elaborate on this?
Well, I took a look at this a half a day ago, it came up that you had to answer. on a broad, stable basis would be hard to capture.
Right.
And you don't know whether you're going to have 150 foot tower or a half acre and no guidelines, or you're going to have a 600 foot tower or a 10 acre.
Why do we have to address the cost? Why can't we make this vague enough that it, all we're concerned about is that the taxpayers through the county is not going to be responsible for incurring any cost due to the abandonment or dismantling of any facility? That's, that's basically all we want, right?
Right.
So can we condense this a little bit and just just make that statement and leave it at that? I mean, we don't have to get into the dirty details. We just need something
I think, you know, this is a general statement, this goes. I'm going to try to condense it.
And I think you said that the performance guarantee is, that's just going to be an added cost to them, but with the performance guarantee, that it is documented that they are responsible if and when abandonment ever takes place, right?
That's, that's probably going to be in the form of like a construction, like performance model.
Well, as long as there's nothing illegal about this paragraph, does anybody have any questions? Everybody okay with it?
I have a question. So with the word facilities, does that cover anything that's related to telecommunications? So, thank you. My question is, somebody puts a bunch of antennas on top of the water tower, and then those antennas are no longer being used. Does this paragraph cover the removal of those from the water tower? Or do we not need to worry about that?
I think it, I think it does.
Okay.
I guess it depends on the definition of facilities.
Have any instructions?
Respiration of property or structure of the facility.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
like the AT&amp;T tower that's out on B line was designated for removal 30 years ago for the FAA. It's, it's filing was dropped 30 years ago.
That's why the timeline's important. That's why there's 12 months written, that's right? Okay. Anybody have any other issues about 517.6?
Good. As a comment, FAA does not require any painting or striking until the tower's level Had it specifically read that recently.
Hmm. There is.
I think it was like 100 or 105, so that's all.
All right. Point 7.1. Point 8 is just kind of a summarization of our relationship with our friends at the federal level. Okay, what, what does everyone want to do about, do you want to make the necessary changes and reprint? Or do you want to vote on it now? Would you feel better if we saw it in corrected form and vote on it next month, or?
Well, should I go ahead? We've made the necessary changes. And we can see what we've already come out next meeting.
So you're suggesting we make a vote on for approval? That make sense, John? Okay, we're going to make a motion to accept if Emily's got good notes yet. She, she will, she's got she's got good notes.
I don't know.
Or if, if Forrest swore that's good news.
Well, she does, too.
I have that for the pair of persons. I got it. I second Mark's motion to approve that.
Okay.
With the notion that I would like all edits as stated.
Any other questions, concerns? Mark has made a motion to accept the document with the changes noted by Emily and Danielle. Emily has seconded. All those in favor, state what they know.
I don't know.
All right. And it's 540.
So it's section 517, military.
All right. Since it's so close to the witching hour, and we don't want to start on another section, then I'll begin in five minutes. I want to ask that we adjourn, but before we do that, I want to thank everyone who has been involved with this. Certainly tried my patience. There's a lot of stuff to go over, and I appreciate everyone's involvement. But we're not quite done, but boy, we're getting close. With that, motion to adjourn?
I, I move to adjourn me.
Actually, he made.
I said it.
He said it.
Kevin, give us some.
All in favor, say it.
Good.
I'm making the motion.
Kevin, second one, and Mark.